Well, thank you, Mayor. The first item we have scheduled for the council this evening is a presentation from our Assistant City Manager and Municipal Services Director Lisa Reynolds. As the council will recall, there is contemplation of a general obligation bond issue, a significant portion of which is intended to address deficiencies with the city's street infrastructure network. We also understand that it's a common concern for the council regarding traffic calming and traffic control in the community, so Ms. Reynolds was also going to hit on that topic as well tonight. So for all things streets and roads, here's Ms. Reynolds.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Like I said, Lisa Reynolds, Director of Municipal Services and Assistant City Manager. I've gotten several questions, so these are just a few slides to kind of pull in all the different angles of the questions that you and several of your constituents have had recently. So, one of the big topics is condition of roadways, right? Overall, our score is failing for roadway condition throughout the city. Part of that is just our historical practice of doing overlay only. That was our street maintenance program. For years and years and years, a couple decades actually, we did overlay year after year after year, which is fine and necessary, but it's just the most expensive. Other than complete reconstruction, it's the most expensive form of road maintenance that you can do, and as costs have escalated, you just don't get as much year over year for the same sales tax money coming in. So, what we've moved toward is a pavement management system, which is the planning of pavement maintenance and restorative treatments to maximize the value of our and life of our roadways. So, the difference there between maintenance and restorative, maintenance, think pothole repair and things like that, crack filling stuff and things versus your restorative treatments would be your overlay, full reconstruction, partial depth repairs and things like that. So, again, only since 2022 have we been employing anything other than just overlay. So, since that time, we've come to realize that there isn't a one-size-fits-all approach. So, the old-school way was overlay only, but I can't also tell you that, well, now it's only overlay and crack filling, or this specific seal, like a fog seal, which is the, say, most minimal seal that we would do, or a scrub seal or a cape seal. There's lots of technologies out there, and it just depends on the condition the road is in at the time that you go to employ that specific technology. So, we've moved to not only using other treatments for the roadways, but also using data to drive what roads get treated when. So, we do and have, over the years, done a formal pavement condition index. If you ever hear me spew PCI score, that's what stands for, pavement condition index, and we have done that formally every, on a three-to-five-year cycle with a third-party vendor for the last several years, decades, again. It's very expensive, so that's all the more frequently that we really can manage to do that. However, there are tools out there now that allow us to do, like is listed here, the Rapid Assessment AI tool, that we can have our crews drive down the road to any maintenance job they're going to or anything like that, or specifically just drive for condition. They take video, that video is sent off to a third party, scored and evaluated, and so, and it's a much faster and much more cost-effective approach. So, we did in three weeks' time with our own staff roughly forty percent of our road network. So, we can do this every year, and it's not as, it's AI, so it's not maybe as thorough as the full assessment that we're doing every three to five, but it gives us much more real-time data and will allow us, once we've gone through the whole city once with this technology, to really get better details on how this blended approach we've gone to is working and how quickly we are getting through the system. So, like I said, every street has a score. I hate this chart, but here it is. So, you can see the green is good. Think of it like A, B, C, D, F in school. Twenty-four percent of our streets get a B or above. That is all. Everything else is C or below, and you can see that twenty point one of our streets are below a forty for a PCI scale on the PCI scoring. So, we have a lot of street maintenance work out there to do. All of these, based on their condition, have been assigned an ideal treatment. We try and stretch those treatments as much as we can, try overlay and maybe only have to do partial depth repairs in certain sections instead of complete reconstruction of some really bad roads. Sometimes that works, and sometimes, once we're in there, we have to just do full reconstruction. But you can see, it's not the best outlook. So, our program objective, again, that we've moved to, is to try and keep the condition of the roadways in that excellent-to-good condition as long as possible. So, basically, this chart, well, it has a lot going on. The roadways maintain seventy-five percent of their good, quality, useful life for roughly fifteen years, and then they degrade very quickly after that. So, if we can use crack filling and seals to keep that curve high for the, for maybe extend that fifteen years to twenty to twenty-two, we save a fortune over the long haul. So, the stat there is actually, if we spend a dollar on prevention, i.e. crack filling and seals, then we save six to ten dollars for that same repair if it has to go to a full repair down the road. And again, this is just another way of looking at the change. So, if we were to do overlay alone with our budget, this year, we would have touched just under, I think it was forty-four lane miles, we would have overlaid. With the blended approach that we've gone to, we will touch in some form or fashion with some treatment, one hundred and eleven lane miles this year. So, the original stats, when I pulled this, and again, when I gave this presentation a couple of years ago, we had just finished the full third-party PCI assessment. So, since we haven't gotten another one, and we haven't made it all the way through the city with our AI tech, I can't tell you exactly the years, but the comparison was, it would take twenty-seven years to go through the city once if we were doing overlay only versus eleven years to go through the city once doing this blended approach. So, that's basically, in a super quick nutshell, pavement maintenance. But like I said, our grades citywide are pretty terrible. So, our street needs, as you can see here, and I know this is a lot of numbers, and I apologize, bear with me, we have known overlay needs, known partial depth repair needs, reconstruction and full-depth repair needs all throughout the city. Anything not listed here in our lane mile count would still be eligible for a seal, crack filling, something lesser than at least an overlay. So, all this totals over nine hundred lane miles and three hundred and thirty-one million dollars, which our street sales tax budget, we expect to bring in about nine million and change this year, and our pavement maintenance program is around five million of that every year. So, just to give you a kind of the numbers and, I guess, really just paint a more dire picture, but it's an honest look at where we are. And the other part of our road network that you're all probably too aware of would be our bridges, and the fact that we have right now, as we stand here tonight, four that are out of service citywide. But these fourteen, and the four that are closed are on this list, but these fourteen are in no need of maintenance and/or, and if they don't receive that maintenance, facing things like weight reductions or closure in the next few years. So, these would all be on our CIP. So, when I say they're on our CIP, we would be looking to do something to them in the next five years. So, that's kind of the timeframe schedule you're looking at here. But, all things considered, with just bridges alone, you're at ten million on this list, and all these numbers are in today dollars, not accounting for inflation as we go a couple of years out, because obviously we can't begin to touch this in just one year. So, we would be paying, we'll pay more for this down the road. So, just a visual, pictures worth a thousand words. The bridge picture there is Kentucky Avenue Bridge. It, the building you see in the background is one of the larger wastewater pump stations. That is our primary access. So, it is, it impacts our residents, it impacts our staff doing their jobs every single day. So, if you don't have questions about, I'm happy to answer any questions before I hit just a couple of things about traffic calming, but that changes gears, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Ms. Reynolds, just a question. One of the questions I get from time to time and that I wonder about is, you know, we, we might do a significant work on a road, overlay it, seal it, do whatever we do, and then, you know, a month later or two months later, one of the utilities is in there tearing it up and, you know, patch it, and you got holes every, you know, in front of every house, for example. What's our policy relative to them making the repairs, and do we, can we do anything to, you know, be aware of what they're doing down the road so that we don't, you know, overlay a street and then two months later that gets, you know, undone? So, I'm just curious as to what we can do there.
So, we internally, the, the three internal utilities do meet consistently and talk about project areas for water main replacement, for instance. We compare the water main replacement list to the overlay list and make sure that one is not going to interfere with the other, and we're trying to do those around the same time. External utilities, it's a little harder. We can't force them to give us a schedule. We do schedule utility coordination meetings with external utilities, and we do request that information. Sometimes what we get is valid, sometimes schedules change, things happen. I can tell you, as far as restoration requirements, if they're in a newly overlaid section within two years, then they are responsible to go back in and, not just patch it, but overlay. And we did, with the adoption of the Design and Construction Manual, change the requirements for street restoration following any kind of repair that would happen to require a full lane width patch, or, I mean, if it can be a patch, it'd still have to be full lane. We extended the length of those repairs, and we changed the distance between cuts, so you can't have cut, patch here, ten feet, patch here, five more feet, patch here. We forced that to be one long patch if it has to be a patch instead of re-overlaid.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So, you mentioned that we have, let me see, nine hundred lane miles in need, and out of how many are in the city?
Roughly twelve hundred.
Okay, thank you. And we have four bridges that are out and ten that are in trouble. How many do we have total bridges in the city? Sorry, I didn't mean to be stump-a-chump, but.
Ouch. I'd have to pull the maps to pull that. I don't know that I brought my head.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
So, the last, we have talked about this before. The last time we talked, you also had a hiring issue. You had, I think, you had six positions opening, open at the time that I talked to you that you couldn't fill, and that was part of your problem?
It is worse.
It's worse, okay.
We have twenty-five street maintenance worker positions at that shop, and currently we have twelve street maintenance workers. And that includes sign shop staff, so things like guardrail, hit signs, missing signs, and all those issues, all that operation. That's usually a shop of four, and we have one.
Thank you.
Anybody else have other further questions?
Please proceed. When we did the street tax renewal a couple of years ago, didn't we built in sidewalks into that question, or no?
No, sidewalks and curbs are and have always been the property owner's responsibility.
Okay. For some reason, I thought we had built that in, and we removed the sunset.
There are a few exceptions on sidewalks. If it's, certain grants have required that if we, we put them in, that we are on the hook to maintain them. But, as a general rule, no. We do have, in the CIP, sidewalks to the schools and sidewalks to park money, and that's a program that we continue to work on, but at the end of the day, there's, those would still be the homeowner's responsibility.
Do we remove the sunset clause on that?
Yes.
Okay. At least I was right on something then.
Yes.
That's good. Not only are you having trouble with, with having people that work for the city work for our street maintenance program, we're still having troubles with contractors, mid-level-sized contractors using the Chrisler Bridge at, in Lexington as the example.
Yes.
Can you explain a little bit of the problem that we have had with that?
Yes.
And we do understand there is a problem there, and we try to resolve that.
Yes, the post-COVID world is very, very different, especially as it pertains to construction. There are just plain and simple, fewer contractors today than there were before the pandemic. Not all of the businesses came out on the other side, and so there are fewer companies available to do the work. And as you all know, there were lots of federal dollars put out there to do infrastructure projects and address those needs with ARPA funds and other things like that. So, lots of, lots of work and fewer contractors to do it. So, we have put a few projects out on the street, anything from storm to bridge repair to a lighting and sealing project down at Rock Creek, that we've gotten zero responses on the bids. And a couple of them have gone out multiple times, and we've still gotten zero responses. So, we have an internal staffing problem too, but do occasionally have contractor issues where we just don't get interest because the job's too small, everyone's busy with the big federally funded projects and things like that.
Which is a unique situation, because that's never been a problem before, ever.
It hadn't been, no?
No. So, it's a unique situation we're finding ourselves in competing. Thank you for the staff that you guys are out there cranking as much as you possibly can, so.
Yep. Great staff down there, just a little spread thin right now. If you don't have more street questions, I'll just give you highlights of traffic calming. This has come up with several locations in town, whether it's construction has changed the pattern of normal traffic, or a light was out and people went around a different way. So, this has come up several times recently. We do have a formal application process. It can be found on the city's website. I'm happy to email it. If they call into Municipal Services, we can get that emailed, sent a host of ways, but it is on the website. It takes five signatures to trigger a traffic calming study, which has to be done before any traffic calming measures would be put into place. One of the trickiest pieces of that is to actually implement traffic calming devices. It requires seventy percent approval of the affected area or the petitioning area. And so, what people often get confused about is they think, well, of the people that responded, more than seventy percent said yes, but it's not of the respondents, it's of the actual, every resident in the petition area. So, that is one point, just for your reference. If you get, I know several of you have had questions before, and that's one of the things that's come up. Seventy percent of the area, not of the people that responded. So, if we get the five signatures, yeah.
So, a quick question on that. When you say service area, is that people who, using a street as an example, is it the people who front that street that have to be seventy percent of the people that are along that street?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if there's, you know, ten of them, and only five of them respond, we are, we're already not there, even if all five say yes?
But not the neighbor back to behind?
Correct.
Okay, fair enough.
So, and, and part of the application process defines those boundaries of, that people are interested in, in the traffic calming devices being put in.
So, does that require us to go to, I mean, do we go to those, those citizens, or can, you know, if there's a group of really concerned citizens, can they, you know, drum up support for that in, you know, on a grassroots basis?
Yes, the citizens absolutely are the ones that get those signatures. We, as staff, will go and we've done HOA meetings. We've had neighbors come to city facilities and sat down and explained the process to them and things like that. We can email instructions, however it's best. We walk them through the process, but we don't secure the signatures.
Okay, all right, that's good, thank you.
And then, another thing.
Excuse me, Lisa.
Sorry.
Please proceed.
Just before you get going, you say traffic calming devices, which means something to you, but not to the rest of the world?
And that's what I was just getting ready to say. And this is really the only slide on this, I promise. So, I have a couple of them listed there. Most people think, when they say traffic calming devices, that they want speed bumps. Speed bumps don't work everywhere, and they are very polarizing. Some people really love them because they force people to slow down generally. Some people really, really hate them, that they, you know, they damage my car, it causes issues with snowplows, pick a thing, but very polar opposite reviews on those. But, some of the other things that can be done would be curb extensions, speed feedback signs, you know, the PD has the trailers that flash sign, you know, you're going this fast. Not that I have a lead foot, but if I did, I definitely would slow down immediately. But they have permanent versions of those signs that are solar-powered that can be installed. Narrowing streets, that's been done in Inglewood, that you narrow the corridor, because visually, something that's more narrow just slows people down. So, when we say traffic calming, it doesn't necessarily just mean speed tables, speed humps, things like that. There are a host of different options, and all of those would be evaluated as part of the study that's done as part of this process. And not all, not all traffic calming devices can be used. For instance, Twenty-Four Highway, you can't have speed bumps because that's an emergency route, and what you don't want to do is create a projectile out of an emergency vehicle. So, just, you know, things not everybody necessarily thinks about, but there are definitely restrictions about what kinds of traffic calming devices can be used in each situation. Any questions about traffic calming?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
What exactly are curb extensions? How do they work?
They can be, some people call them bulb bouts, that they'll, like, the regular curb follows straight, and then it'll round out almost, well, actually into the lane at the end or at an intersection, and it really, like, again, that's one of those things that narrows that corridor visually, and in that case physically, and causes people to slow down.
Okay, and then you say the application process. What mandates have them having to have that many signatures and?
That's, that's our internal policy.
So, it's not like a city's ordinance or?
It's not an ordinance. No, this is just our internal policy practice. There are some cities that just don't allow, like, speed bumps aren't allowed in Blue Springs. Some people take a hard stance that absolutely not this, but maybe this. We have a, internally, we have this policy that, you know, we look at, traffic counts are a part of this, and average speeds, and all those things are part of the, the actual report is, I don't know, twenty-page report that comes back with all the charts and graphs of speed and time of use and all, all those stats that are, that go into determining what can and can't be used in a, in a location.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have other further questions? Okay, I've got a number, so please.
Okay.
So, I'm an HOA president. What do I tell, walk me through the process. Let's say that we want to have a neighborhood improvement, because the city's not necessarily going to pay for build-outs and things like that in a neighborhood.
It depends. Like, if we're putting in, if traffic calming devices like speed bumps or tra, or speed tables are deemed necessary, we absolutely do put those in.
Okay. So, there is, there is some funding for the city, but it might be a scenario like that. Could a neighborhood do a neighborhood improvement district just for that area to do that, and to say if they had a pretty complex system they wanted to put in place?
We've shied away from NIDs in the past and gone more in favor of CIDs. You could, again, depending on just the circumstances and what would be allowed in a particular area and what wouldn't be.
Okay. And then, what's the typical, obviously, for your application process, that are your policies, you've got the strip of just the houses that face the street that has the concerns. But if you were to do a CID, would you widen that out to be the second or third street back from that? How do they typically work?
That just depends on the individual community. So, you know, we've seen CIDs for road maintenance and requests for sanitary or storm systems and things like that. So, it depends on if, if it was an HOA, it depends on if you were taking the approach of who, how many, how many participants are going to be assessed, right? Because that's how CIDs are paid, on a special assessment. So, is it, are we only assessing the people that are adjacent to the street, or are we assessing the entire neighborhood and it's part of the HOA and it's for the betterment of all? That's just personal approach on how. That can be approved in the HOA example.
Okay. And then, I get a lot of calls, and I'm sure all of you do, about Chrisler Avenue. Anything we can do on Chrisler and Sterling, because people have actually called it I-Chrisler, which is never a good thing, and as you will know.
Since it was widened?
Pardon me?
Since it was widened?
Right. It's wide, it's clear, it's straight. People now pass during the pass, you know, in the turn lanes. So, you know, those are real concern, and, well, and you had a story that you shared with me on that council member about you're working on a piece of property. And so, he's working on a piece of property, if, or should I steal your story and let you tell it?
Go ahead.
If I'm, if I'm correct, he was working on a house next door. A car lost control and ran into the house adjacent to the one you were working on. And so, it's just, I'm hearing so many concerns about that, and there needs to be an opportunity for citizens to say, okay, what can we do as a city to, to do that? I mean, I recognize that, hate to bring IPD in, I have such respect for IPD, but the, the number of tickets that we can write are, it's just not there. Your down officers were dealing with that issue in August. So, if we can't, if we can't write as many tickets, we've got to do traffic calming in order to curb this, just to make people feel safer in their streets and safer in the process.
There are federal guidelines that we follow for everything from signage to speed limits and everything under the sun related to roadways. We follow that guidance because the, as soon as we step away and we're inconsistent, then we have, well, you did it here, you must do it here. So, really seek to avoid that. So, if a speed limit, I mean, we don't typically lower them or add unwarranted signs. A common request is, can I, can this be a four-way stop? Can this be a three-way stop? Yes, it can, and we have a sign shop, and we can print those and install those, but one of the unintended consequences of adding an unwarranted sign is that then you create the, the thing where, and you see it in the square here as well, people just speed like crazy from sign to sign, and then break hard and then speed to the next one because, well, now we've put a sign there that they're not used to, and they're going to speed even faster because we made them slow down. So, we run into that as well, and that's why we really try and push back on those unwarranted signs, and do follow that guidance to be consistent. And I, I agree, PD is, is struggling with staffing, as we all are, but at the end of the day, honestly, following the rules of the road, I mean, that's an enforcement issue, and I'm not trying to, like, oh, you must go enforce. We can't make people be good all the time, right? And what an amazing world that would be if they just would follow the rules. Not to put anybody out of job.
And we duly noted this is the first time. The chief has, in fact, demonstrated the use of handcuffs in the.
Also, in fact, of course, people.
You heard it here. No, staffing is an issue for all of us, but.
Right.
But putting in control devices that aren't warranted can cause, can actually make it worse. So, again, we have this process specifically to evaluate all those pieces. And when that report comes back, we are always happy to review those stats. It is a full engineering report, right? So, it is not necessarily the easiest thing to understand when you look at it at first blush, so we are always happy to sit down with, you know, whoever had requested it, walk through the findings and answer any questions we, we can. And again, we, we go to HOA meetings. We, we're welcome to have them come in and speak with staff during the day, whatever is easiest and provides the greatest benefit to the residents making the request. But unfortunately, you can't, you can't always say yes, right? And, and sometimes that's just where we find ourselves. But we, we try and accommodate everything that we can, as long as it's in conformance with the federal guidelines.
So, here's my question. This may be a question for all of us as the council and certainly the Audit Committee. I would certainly like our management analysts to look at complaints from citizens according to streets in the highest level, so that we have data to do that. I think that'd be a really, really helpful tool for us to do that, and I think that'd be a good task for the management analyst, and that might be something that the Audit Committee would like to, to review or talk about. And the other side of it is, you're willing to go out to HOA meetings, because what I'm getting, what I'm hearing from HOA presidents now is, they would like, what is something that they can control? How can they proceed and that they can control it? And so, now I have a methodology, and I appreciate that, is here, in, you know, I can come to you and say, hey, what's the steps they need to do, but obviously, getting at least five signatures to start the process.
Yep.
Then if you're going to do traffic calming, if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, there has to be seventy percent petition approval in the area in order for those traffic calming items to be in place.
Correct.
So, that way, they've got, they've got some kind of, and then looking at curb extensions, things like that, in order to, in some neighborhoods, because you see some of the newer neighborhoods and say, where they actually build in the streets to be curved for precisely that reason.
I would also cite, though, as, to counter that, Little Blue Parkway is, is a lot of fun to drive. We get a lot of speed complaints out there, and that was, those curves were built in, I think, as part of that design for that reason, and it's kind of actually caused the. And it's kind of actually caused the, again, the reverse that, oh, now it's a, it's a road course.
Yeah, and I would agree with you on that piece of property that it is, but when you've got neighborhoods that the roads do curve and they curve significantly, it does require you to slow down.
Sure.
And we've all seen that. But I agree with you in Blue Parkway, if, if I had a Maserati, it would be certainly fun to see what its limits were.
Absolutely.
Very good. Anybody else other, but I will be, you know, Mr. City Manager, how's the appropriate way for me to work with you and get a list of things so I can say to the HOA presidents, these are the steps to go through and here's the process?
If it's helpful.
How, how's the next step I do that for an HOA president?
If it's helpful, I can send out the petition packet to all of you just so you have it for reference. I mean, we are always happy as staff to send that out to whoever's requesting it, but if someone comes to you directly, at least you have it available and ready if that's.
Please.
Afterwards, or we can do it now, I'd be more than happy to explain to you how working with constituents hand-on and in face-to-face and you can walk them through that process from start to finish and have a good hands-on with your community.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I would love to do. I mean, I, that's exactly why we're having this discussion is so, you know, how can I help them and what can I do for them?
Well, let's do coffee. I'll show you how you can help them.
All right, perfect. I, maybe I should have just skipped this process and you and I should have said, I talked, so.
Been doing it for some years.
We've gone through a few of these.
Absolutely. I appreciate it, my friend. Okay. Anyone else?
Just one question.
Please.
Is a roundabout considered a traffic calming device?
Yes.
Okay. Because we don't have any in Independence, do we?
We don't. There are a few that have been submitted as grant projects, but none that we've been awarded to date.
Gotcha, gotcha. Just, I was just curious.
Someday.
Anyone else? Okay. Mr. City Manager, anything to close up before we, well, we've got one more item, so.
Nothing more on this topic.
Okay, very good. So would you like to lead us into the next one?
I'll be happy to. As the council will recall, Memorial Day weekend, things got a little breezy around here. So the council had asked for a report out about our response to that event, lessons learned, things we think we did well, but also opportunities for improvement the next time the storms decide to pick up. So our Chief of Emergency Operations, Sam Morris, is here to provide you with that overview and summary.
Thank you. All right. Mayor and City Council, thank you so much for having me up here tonight. In no way, shape or form am I going to pretend like I am an expert at IPL. So we're going to take a journey through our Memorial Day storm, but by all means, if we have specific questions for the experts in the field, we definitely have someone here from comms and IPL. I will do my absolute best to answer those questions as they come, but we will see, we'll see what happens. So let's talk about some of the events and actions leading up to the storm. So on the right hand of the screen, traditionally, we receive notification from the National Weather Service. Of course, it starts off as a watch, goes into a warning. They get very detailed and specific as to what we can expect as they continue to monitor the radar. We have staff on standby with all departments. So again, we're going to kind of do a little bit of a combination of IPL, emergency management and communication. So when I say staff was on standby, each of these entities, each of these departments all had staff that were ready to go. We activated our EOC that night around 5:30 PM. We had staff in there as well as volunteers. IPL troubled dispatchers were also monitoring the radar as they would with any other storm to be able to dictate who we're going to make contact with as, as the storm kind of comes through. Storms moved into the area at approximately 11:00 PM. It was a very wide storm, so we had storms that lasted approximately 45 minutes. There was a little bit of a break in between the two lines that came through, but it was approximately a 45-minute storm. The next morning, we're going to jump a little bit ahead to include communication here, at 6:20 AM, we started communicating with the communications team on posts, where are we at, outages, things like that. And then we did activate our damage assessment group at 7:30 that next morning. So as the 45-minute storm rolled through, National Weather Service came back and said in areas within Jackson County, individuals could have seen specifically within our little region, 50 to 60 mile an hour wind gusts. Of course, there were areas that received much stronger winds than that. There were some that received a little bit less. Winds for that long, 45 minutes, that's pretty significant. So as we start going through and we're looking at these photos, understand that when you have a, a wind that comes through at, let's just take it on the low end of 50 miles an hour, but that's sustained for a solid anywhere from 30 seconds, 45 seconds to a minute, it can do a tremendous amount of damage. So Evergy's peak outage was approximately 133,000 by the time everything was said and done, and our peak outage was a little over 7,000. So what did it look like? As you can see on the left-hand side, we had some poles that were taken straight from the base to the bottom, and then there were some, like you see on the right-hand side, it's a little difficult to see on the screen, but we have some that literally just bent right in half. So again, dependent upon the trajectory of the wind and how it comes, what's surrounding those poles, these are the type of issues and things that we can have. As we go through, you can see on the left-hand side there, we've got lines that are not only down, we've got damage to the pole itself, we have support beams that have been split. You know, the, the second picture there, of course, Mother Nature can't come through on a Monday at, say, 9:00 AM when it's convenient. We're going to come through on a holiday weekend, but we're also going to hit and damage all of our three-phase poles. So she did a great job of doing that numerous occasions. So that's what that second, second photo is. That is a, a three-phase pole there and you can kind of tell. The next two, we were either lucky that it went one way as opposed to straight on that fence in that third photo, or the poles decided that it would be a great idea that we're going to split right in the middle of a tremendous amount of other trees and brush, and it become probably one of the hardest poles to end up replacing is when we have those going into other trees. So what does this mean for city employees after the storm hit and we're doing our damage assessment? What does that look like? We had 34 out of 35 linemen that reported in for duty. We had individuals that were down at the lake, they were with their family. We had some that were three hours away, some that were four, and we also had one that was in Nebraska. When I talked to Paul here, I asked him, he said, hey, I've already got guys on the streets. I said, what do you mean you already have guys on the streets? We haven't called them in yet. And he said, no, 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 you don't understand. This is IPL. These are their poles. They're coming in. They're already on their way and, like I said, 34 out of the 35 reported in for duty, ready to go, ready to work on these and restore our citizens. What does this mean for them? They're working 16-hour shifts with eight hours off and that was continued throughout the entire weekend. We had support staff that were here on place around the clock, whether that be to help with the storm recovery efforts, whether that be to house these individuals. We'll get a little bit into mutual aid here in just a second. We did have to activate our mutual aid with other municipalities. And so what does that look like? What does that mean? Well, that's a tremendous amount of work on the support staff. Where are they going to stay? How are they going to get here? How are we going to feed them? Where are they going to go? Things like that. How are we going to dispatch them? Getting them accommodated to our area and, and showing them exactly where they're going, lining them up with, with our employees. So support staff played an integral part in this entire process. So before we start sending them out, we're going to have to assess the outages. What does that look like for IPL? So IPL prioritizes outages the following way. So we look at the greatest number of customers within one location. We're looking at the individuals, we're, we're looking at the, the groups that use the most, basically. So we're looking at those hospitals, we're looking at nursing homes, we're looking at healthcare facilities, and we're getting them back up and running. Next, we're going to look at our neighborhoods. We're going to look at the neighborhoods that have the greatest amount of outages. What do those restorations look like? So again, we go back to that damage assessment. We're going out and we're assessing what damage that we do have, and that'll come into play here in just a second. And then we're looking at those one-offs where we have individuals that the line from the pole to the home has been disconnected in some way, shape or form, and just that home or maybe, you know, two or three are not receiving the power that they should. This is a good opportunity for us to talk a little bit about the critical care program, and this is an opportunity for individuals within our community to let us know that they are dependent upon some kind of machine. That can be as, you know, significant as having some kind of oxygen or, or breathing machine that's there, an individual that needs to use the medical equipment. It could be as, and not, not to minimize this, but it could be as small as maybe just a breathing, a sleep apnea machine, you know? So tho, those are much smaller in compare, in comparison to when you're talking about, you know, oxygen machines or hospital beds, something like that, that, that needs quite a bit. You can sign up for this program, but understand that this program in no way, shape or form is expected to, nor has it ever been, that you will never receive, I'm sorry, that you will never lose electricity. So that, that is absolute myth. It's something that I've heard for years and years. Just because you fill out this application and sign up for it does not mean that you are number one priority on the list, but it gives us a good idea as to, you know, what we have within those neighborhoods and trying to connect you to the correct people. Now, obviously, when an individual signs up for this program, emergency preparedness is also notified. We work with those individuals to ensure that they have the necessary means to be able to have, you know, an alternative plan in place, whether that be work with the insurance to get an additional battery, whether that be what, you know, if it's a, a nursing home or home healthcare or something like that, what does it look like to have a home generator, things like that? So we do kind of work together and, and play a part in that. So like I stated before, we did request mutual aid. We had, with Quick Action, with the Missouri Public Utilities Assistance, we were able to call in three additional municipalities. That was Columbia with a five-man crew and equipment, and they have specialized equipment very similar to ours in Columbia, just because of the similarity between the two. So having them, you know, get five men here as well as allow us to use some of that equipment was instrumental in being able to get people recovered as quick as we were. Higginsville sent a three-man crew and Harrisonville also sent a three-man crew. So obviously, the numbers are not extremely high, but again, we have to remind ourselves, Memorial Day weekend, there are a lot of people that use that weekend for the lake or vacations to kind of kick off summer. So this, this was a, honestly, this was a fantastic call-out for what we were working with based off of mutual aid. Okay, so one of the main reasons, I believe, why this was even asked is, let's take a deeper dive into Country Meadows and the outages that were in there. So it's important for us to understand that they did see the longest outage, but it was also one of the biggest. It was incredibly difficult. Again, Mother Nature did us no favor. All, the four poles that were in Country Meadows, the complexity and the location of them became incredibly difficult to get to. So each of them were in a backyard, okay? That takes completely different equipment than what it would traditionally take if we were just driving down the street. So we've got special equipment that goes to use that. The location, all four of them fell into additional trees. So when we go out to assess the situation, I know a couple of you had reached out, they were like, well, an IPL truck showed up, they came out, they looked around, they got back in and they left. No idea why they were here, but they did nothing and were still without power. That's, that's normal. That's supposed to happen. So we don't want to send crews out without knowing exactly what we're working with. So what that individual did was that damage assessment, he went out, he saw that the pole was damaged, he saw that it went into additional trees, most of them had lines that were down. So he's assessing that situation, he's coming back, he's telling us exactly the supplies that he thinks we need, the crews that need to be dispatched out, and the fact that we're going to need a tremendous amount of tree work done. So that, i, in a nutshell, that is what Country Meadows experienced was, the four damaged poles were done in such a way to where it was extremely difficult to be able to get to them. We did have one individual, one citizen who allowed us to use our IPL trucks to go into his backyard to be able to make the, the fix that we needed to, which that saved, I mean, that truly got Country Meadows back up and running. That one single individual allowing us to be able to get our trucks in there as opposed to waiting for that backyard equipment that I was talking about earlier, that, that really contributed, contributed to, you know, us being as successful as we were to being able to get them back up and running. So our communication efforts, so over the course of three days, the IPL and the communications team both worked together on over 13 different posts updating our citizens. Several of them received upwards of 16,000 reactions, whether that good, bad and different. They were still being seen, which is exactly what we're looking for. We want to be able to get the word out to our citizens. We had 60,000 individuals by the time the three days was over. We had 60,000 individuals that were in some way, shape or form reached, and this is an increase of interaction by 132%. So that, that in and of itself is a success. We're, we're being able to get the word out, to update them. We were, I should also add that the commu, the teams that worked together on this were posting anywhere from 6:00 AM. There was one post that I saw that happened at 2:00 AM pertaining to Country Meadows, so they were also working around the clock on this. So what does the current status look like? We had two drop-off depots, one on Thursday and Friday that was opened up specifically for this particular storm that blew through. We had 166 cars that went through that drop-off depot, and then we also allowed them to be able to come in the second Saturday, which happened to be this last Saturday, but the second Saturday of every, every month for the drop-off depot, they were able to come in and drop off any tree debris, anything like that for free. So that was, that was absolutely a success. We do have some temporary repairs that we do need to go back through and make permanent. Those are things that will happen over the course of the next several weeks. It's nothing to be alarmed about. It's not like they're going to lose, unexpectedly lose power just because of this temporary fix. It certainly can withstand, you know, it can, it can stay. But we, we certainly want to make it official and permanent. And then there are some streetlights that were impacted by the storm, whether it be they were bent, there were a couple that were leaning. So IPL will be working on that also over the course of the next few months. Supply chain with those are a little difficult right now, so trying to use what we have and, and work through what we've got. There are some initiatives that we've been working on. You know, communication was another thing that was brought up. So IPL is instituting a new monitoring program using AI, and what this will do is it will utilize satellite imagery and it will also be able to use drones to evaluate the distance between trees that are growing and our power lines so that we are focused on areas of greatest importance or that could cause the biggest issues for us should we have another storm like this blow through. So using, using this should really help us with, with those trees and vegetation, vegetation around the power lines. Looking at late summer for this to be fully implemented, I think most of you probably remember this coming forward to council a few months ago. Auto text feature, so we are also working with text services in our in-house for City Works, and we are working with them to be able to utilize a service where we can create a very specific area. It pulls all of that data and information and we can send out standard text messages, whether it's, you know, we, we know that you have a power outage, we're sending crews out or crews are on their way. It could be that you're going to have intermittent electricity. You know, a lot of times we get messages on, on social media that, okay, I had power this entire time and now it goes out. What in the world's going on? So being able to notify those individuals and tell them, we understand, we're working on this, and being able to do it in, in the masses is, you know, really what we're looking for. The other item, again, that was brought forward is AMI. Being able to have that automated information that instantly comes to us and says, this individual is not receiving power, is much quicker than the system that we're currently working with. So just to give you a little bit of insight as to what some of our support staff dealt with this past storm, we found out that over 60% of our current users have a, a phone number associated to the account that is not the number that they use to call in the outage. So as an individual that has a landline, I have my IPL billing set up under that landline, but I'm going to come over here and use my cell phone because, for obvious reasons. By doing so, every single one of those messages has to be listened to by an actual individual, writing it down and manually putting it into the system. And when you're dealing with 60% of individuals at a 7,000 power outage rate, it's taking a tremendous amount of time. So again, with these initiatives that, that we're working on, these last two, you know, it's, it's really important that we use phone numbers that we're able to reach people at. So again, if we're, if we're putting that landline as our main contact, you're also not going to receive those texts that we're trying to implement on bullet number two. So we did have a debrief with staff. What did we do well? What did we not do so well? And again, you know, every storm is different. A lot of times we get asked, well, how does this compare to the ice storm of 2012? Well, both lost a lot of poles, but it's vastly different in, in comparison. So, you know, we just, we have to be careful and understand that every storm's different. We're not going to compare them to one another. we're not going to compare them to one another. At the end of the day, IPL still maintains their diamond reliability status. We are in the top 10, we're one of the top 10 most reliable in the nation. So this is a fantastic award that IPL works very hard to receive, and so it's important for us to remember that, that, you know, while it did take a little bit longer for Country Meadows to, to be able to get back up and running and back to their everyday life, we, we are still maintaining this status. And then we, we talked about the communication and what does that look like? Do we need to increase our communication with councils so that you guys can then go and increase communication with constituents? And what does that form of communication look like? What does it look like internally? There were times where there was some information that was being distributed, you know, by emergency preparedness that maybe contradicted what IPL was seeing, whether that be on radar, whether that be to staff, whether that be to damage assessments. And so being able to link up the departments as best we can, as quick as we can, was another area in which we felt like we needed to improve upon. So with that, I will take any questions you have, and again, we have experts here to answer any specific questions, but I'll do my best.
I, I talked about this at a previous council meeting. This was the best communication I've seen for one of these, so a special appreciation to the folks who did that. It was easier for people to follow along, so thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, but I, thank you so much for this. This is exactly the stuff I didn't know and wasn't able to communicate to the people that were asking me questions. So now I know, I appreciate that. I also learned some lessons from this, which was, I was not checking my computer for emails and so I learned a lot from this also. I appreciate all your hard work. You guys did an amazing job. I'm so proud of the work that was done and I have friends that lived other places that didn't have power until the following Thursday. So we, you know, we're very lucky.
Yes, very, thank you. And we'll certainly pass that on. It was, it's a, a team effort from all the departments that were involved and we did a great job working together, I would agree.
Please proceed.
So just a comment really, and, 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 you know, I thought it went really pretty well in general. The, the questions or the comments that I received from people were not so much a question of, you know, I know we're, I mean, we, we know what happened and we know it's going to be a while before we get power back. Back, the question is, is there any way to find out, you know, is it going to be, you know, an hour? Is it going to be three days? Is it going to be, you know, what, what's it going to be? And so that they could take preparation on their part to maybe try to save some refrigerated items or things of that nature. And so, you know, well, you know, while I, I get it that, you know, 16,000 posts, I gue- I'm assuming that's Facebook posts.
Yes, sir.
You know, that's only good for people that have Facebook. And, you know, there's just a, if there's some way that we could, and I know you talked about the text, maybe you can talk about that just a little bit more, but if there's some way that we could have some kind of a system where people could somehow reach out and find out, yeah, you know, we know this is going to be the case, but it's going to take us a little while to get, but, you know, is it going to be days? And, 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 and I don't know if that's possible or not, but something like that would be helpful only from a standpoint of knowing, you know, my refrigerator can hold for 12 hours or whatever it is. But, yeah, and I might lose my ice cream and stuff like that, but I won't lose everything. And, you know, but if it's going to be three days, then maybe I'm going to take it to my sister's house and, and put it someplace, you know, or something like that.
Sure, sure. And so we're, we're absolutely looking into that to determine what we can do. What we want to be cautious of though is we don't want to tell individuals that this particular outage is going to last six hours, because once our linemen actually get out there, they look at it, they assess the situation, we're calling in a tree trimming crew, but the tree trimmers are across town, it's going to take approximately an hour and a half for them to get done just to get across town. It just, once you start putting in all of those kind of layers, it becomes very convoluted and, so we certainly don't want to give, you know, unrealistic expectations, but absolutely, we're, we are certainly looking into that to try and assist. There were, there were several rumors that were floating on Facebook that crew had told them that, oh, well, because of the holiday weekend, you know, it's, it, we'll see y'all on Wednesday. Well, that certainly is not the case. That was not said, that did not happen. And, and our linemen are out there, you know, clearly, coming back from their own vacation, family reunions in Nebraska. I mean, they were, they were out there day in and day out. Some of the photos that you saw tonight, they were still boots on the ground at 11:00 PM and midnight and 1:00 in the morning, so.
There's no doubt the commitment from those folks is.
Oh, they were incredible.
Incredible and, and much appreciated. And, and I think people understand that in general, you know, yeah, you can't tell me it's going to be X number of hours, I would understand, but if, if you can give me a, you know, a ballpark so I know that, yeah, I'm not going to lose every, all my perishables and things of that nature, that, if we could do something of that nature, and maybe we can't, and, and sometimes that's the answer. But that, that's kind of the feedback I heard more than anything.
No, very helpful. We will absolutely look into that and see what options we have and what we can do.
Anyone else other further questions?
I agree with my colleagues, in, in retrospect, I feel did a great job and they were in a difficult task and, and that's just so important for us to share with them that we, we share their thanks and they worked hours and hours and hours in, you know, in dangerous situations at night. It's got to be very difficult and grueling. So, anyone else with their comments?
Mr. City Manager, anything to wrap up?
Nothing else on this one.
All right, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.